Good evening, everyone. We apologize for getting in here a little late tonight. This is the business meeting for the date of February 10, 2025. Would everybody please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Mrs. DeLeva, would you please read the safety message and the ground rules?
Sure. Good evening and welcome to the February 10, 2025, meeting of the Patrick Medford Board of Education. In the unlikely event of an emergency, please use the exits located at the front and rear of the auditorium to exit the building. Do not attempt to drive away as you may impede the arrival of emergency services. Please be advised that smoking and the use of vape products are strictly prohibited on school grounds. There are two public comment portions to the Board of Education meeting. The first will be for comments relating to the consent agenda items and/or presentations. The second public comment section will be open for any topic you would like to bring to the Board. During each of these public comment times, each speaker will have three minutes with no sharing of minutes. Please state your name and address when you approach the podium. You will be warned when you have 30 seconds remaining and asked to conclude after three minutes. Please refrain from discussing specific students or staff members. To protect their privacy, these matters should be discussed with the appropriate administrator. Please direct all questions or comments to the Board of Education president.
Thank you, Mr. DeLeva. Okay, we're going to move on to item number six, presentations and/or reports. First up is going to be Employees of the Month. Dr. Cohen, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. It's my pleasure to recognize our Employees of the Month for this month. We have two this month. And first, I'd like to bring up Joseph McGarty, security guard at Tremont. Come on up, Joseph. Joseph, this recognition stems from a parental interaction specifically when you assisted one particular parent when her vehicle key fob stopped working and her purse and other belonging cellphone were locked inside the car. You stayed with her, you provided her assistance and support until the situation was resolved, you exhibited remarkable patience, empathy, helped her troubleshoot, and resolve the concern. That's a great way to be an upstander, so we appreciate that, Joseph. Congratulations on this well-deserved recognition. If you just wait there a minute, Joseph, while I introduce the other, and then we'll hand out a certificate of appreciation and a little token gift. Next up, I'd like to bring up Sonia Rivera, bilingual office assistant at Medford. And I see you brought along your entourage. So Sonia, you received multiple nominations for your unbelievable work ethic, your commitment and versatility to fulfill multiple roles to assist the parents at Medford, specifically staying after hours to explain the importance of our online communication platforms by assisting parents with downloading the ParentSquare application and helping them sign in. You also were directly involved in helping parents to sign into the eSchool parent portal so they could be more familiar with their child's progress and be up to date on how things are doing. You've done this after hours, all while consistently exhibiting tremendous patience, kindness with the students, staff, and parents alike. We appreciate all that you do, and I extend my congratulations on this well-deserved recognition to both of you. And now, if Dr. Jones and the board would please come up, we'll take a picture.
Okay, moving right along, we're going to go down to Presentations and Reports, letter B. There'll be a presentation on iReady Math Kindergarten through 5th Grade Implementation Update by Dr. Dally.
All righty. Good evening, everyone. I'm Dr. Tanya Dally, Director of Elementary STEM. I just want to take a moment to thank the Board of Education, Superintendent Dr. Jones, Assistant Superintendent Ms. Lori Canetti, for having myself and my team here present to you some updates and some highlights of our new math program, iReady Classroom Mathematics. Here with me this evening, joining me this evening, is my chairperson, Department Chairperson, Ms. Jess Percher, our math implementation specialist, Mr. Tom Whaley. We also have a 3rd grade team of teachers here from Barton Elementary School. We have Ms. Matthew Renahan, we have Ms. Gianna Abiles, and we have Ms. Angela Consalazio. From Medford Elementary School, we have a 2nd grade teacher, Ms. Danielle Ratchardi, joining us this evening, and my colleague, Dr. Shannon Deland, Principal of Medford Elementary School. Also, my colleague, Ms. Karen Moser, is joining me this evening. She's the Director of Reading, Early Learning, and Homeschooling. And we have some math scholars joining us this evening who are going to go up now and start working on their exemplars. That's Ms. Amelia Moser and Ms. Nora Moser. All righty. So this evening, light agenda, real light agenda. We're going to talk a little bit about training, we're going to talk about how we use the data from our program to inform the decisions that we made. We had over 90 teachers surveyed, we had over 600 students respond to a survey, so you're going to hear some feedback from their voices, and then we'll talk about our next step in our implementation. So you know the website edreports. The website edreports, what they do is they review all types of programs, and when they reviewed the program that we chose, they let us know that our program meets the standards for high-quality instructional materials, and also that it meets expectations with the gateways. Those gateways are rigor and mathematical practices, focus and coherence, and also usability. So after our program was adopted, we developed a very comprehensive professional learning plan to support all of our teachers. We recognized the importance of ongoing targeted and differentiated training for our teachers. We had training during Superintendent's Conference Day, during department meetings, during PDPs. We also had the reps join a team of administrators this year. We visited over 30 classrooms, having learning walks. We were able to provide immediate feedback for our teachers and also get a pulse on how our program is working in the classrooms. This is a choice board of the different onsite support options that our teachers are exposed to. They call Tom and Jessica, they tell them that this is what we want, and Tom and Jess roll in and they provide the training for them. Also, some of this training takes place, again, at department meetings, after-school, mandatory training meetings, and PDPs. This is a sample schedule of onsite support. This is pretty much every month we are in the classrooms, we are doing PDPs with our teachers. You often hear us talk about saying how we teach to standards, and I felt it was important to show you a quick slide, a quick example of a standard. This is a 4th grade standards. The domain is Numbers and Operations in Base 10. Standards define explicitly what our students are supposed to be able to do, what concepts they are supposed to be taught. If you look at number five, it tells us that in Grade 4, students have to be able to multiply a whole number of up to four digits by one-digit whole number and multiply two-digit by two-digit numbers using strategies. It also tells us that the students need to be able to illustrate and explain the calculations by using either equations, rectangular arrays, or area models. Also tells us that they need to be able to do that with division as well, as you can see in number six. Here on the display is an example of two-digit by two-digit numbers multiplication. You see the area model at the top. The students have fun using manipulatives. We teach them so that they can reason abstractly and quantitatively, so they get to see the area model. And then at the bottom, you get to see the visual representation. That's what they'll need to be able to do when they take any type of assessment because they won't have the manipulatives during their assessment. Also wanted to show you the slide on the eight standards for mathematical practices. The learning standards tell us what the students are supposed to be able to do. This is what we're supposed to observe while our students are learning their math concepts. So we're supposed to see our students constructing viable arguments and critiquing the reasoning of others, modeling with math, attending to precision, and so forth. Again, the arduous task of creating pacing guides for K through 5 after our Board adoption. We make this comprehensive guide for K through 5 for each month, very comprehensive, tell the teachers where they're supposed to be each month, tells the teachers what vocabulary terms they're supposed to be teaching, also which unit assessments are going to be digital, which unit assessments are going to be paper-based. And that's what all of our teachers K through 5 follow. With regards to the program components, every student gets two volumes, Volume 1, Volume 2, but students in Grades 2 through 5 get an additional Resource of Fluency and Skills Practice Book. Our students, our teachers, teach math for approximately 50 to 60 minutes per day. On the bottom of this slide, you get a sample of a weekly schedule. You get to see that the students are engaged in small group instruction at least two times a week. Our program also comes with family letters that explain what each student will be learning each lesson. Comes in multiple languages, including Spanish, Urdu, Russian, and Mandarin, and a multiple of other languages as well. Also, for our students that are in the dual-language classrooms, there are supports in English and in Spanish. There is no gap in their learning. If students are doing Lesson 2 today in English, tomorrow they will be doing Lesson 3 in Spanish, the next day they'll be doing Lesson 4 in English. There's no gap in instruction. These next couple of slides just show you some instructional routines for a lesson. Each lesson is like five days long. During the explore day, the teachers will use manipulatives. Then there's two develop days and a refine day. The teachers can whip out the manipulatives to differentiate and scaffold if they need to, or to explore the brand-new topic, but they have total autonomy with that. And now I'm going to hand the presentation over to our math implementation specialist, Mr. Tom Whaley, who's going to be talking to you about the data and how we use it to inform our instruction. Tom, come on down.
I've never used one of these. Thank you for your time this evening. I'm going to go ahead and start with this slide right here. So at the beginning of the year, all the children in the district take a diagnostic, and that diagnostic determines what their individualized pathway is going to be when they log into iReady and work on some iReady instruction. At this point in the school year, we're looking for the children to complete two math and two reading iReady lessons per week. And consistency is probably the most important thing in showing the success. So what you see here are four different domains. This is an example of a child who's been consistently going on two or more times a week. This child has gone on between four and six times a week, completing the two in the classroom, and then with incentives, doing some more at home because they enjoy it. When you see a straight line leading to a dot, that means that the lessons have been slow and steady with the progress, but when you start to see the dotted lines going fast, it means that the child's been on there often, and the algorithm is catching them up to actually where they should be. So this is why it's so important for the children to be on this consistently in order to see real-time data. It also guides for personalized instruction in the classroom. Here, you can see an example from Grade 5 where they're using a digital comprehension check. There are paper lesson quizzes, but online, we're trying to teach all the teachers to incorporate the digital component in the classroom in some ways that the children feel comfortable learning digitally as well. So in this 5th grade example, you're going to see a digital comprehension check Form B on the top. And the reason why teachers are using Form B is an informal assessment. Teachers are using it as a pre-test, gearing the children and getting them ready for the actual formal assessment, or they're using it in class as a whole-class instruction and review. Form A is the formal assessment, and what's great about this is that, if I go to the next slide here, you see real-time data. So this here shows the pre-test at the beginning of the week, showing what the children are going into the lesson already knowing, some prior knowledge, and then it's comparing it to the formal assessment that they take at the end of the week. Here you can see almost a 20% improvement. What the teachers can do with this information is they get to sit with the children in the class and show the real-time data to them, and then go in and use the digital comprehension as a guide to, you know, kind of setting up small groups for the following week, which areas do we still need to improve on. It becomes a whole-class discussion, and then the following week, you have your small groups set up based on the data, and you can move forward with the skills that they already know. Here is an example of how I've been teaching the kindergarten through 2nd grade to use the digital component for unit assessments. So every week, kindergarten, 1st, and 2nd grade teachers are giving paper lesson quizzes, and then they're taking all of that information, and when it's time to give the digital unit assessment, the children all have some base knowledge of all the lessons leading up. And now kindergarten teachers can pull this up, sit down, maybe as a team, the whole kindergarten team teachers can sit down and see if collectively there's any skills across the grade level that they need to refine on. It's a great way for teachers to communicate with parents about some skills that they may want to work on, and it also allows teachers to set up small groups, following up when they're starting a new unit, to refine some of the holes and skills that they're seeing some children still have trouble with. And then here is an example for the dual-language program. So I've been going throughout the district and sitting with the dual-language teams and helping them use the digital components. Obviously, there's two languages, there's the English side and the Spanish side. So what's great about using some of the comprehension checks digitally is it allows the teachers to get together and see if there are parallels between the two classes. And you can see here, this was the formal assessment, you can see that there's yellow components, which is kind of hard to see, there's like the light yellow and the dark yellow. The dark yellow is showing that a partial credit was given. So what's nice about having this information, oh, actually, I'm looking at this and it looks different than over there. So the yellow is showing that the children did not maybe choose all the correct answers, they chose some. So that opens discussion with the children of the importance of looking at every single question and making sure that every choice is a yes or a no, but it also allows the teachers in dual-language to prepare for the following week. So if you look here, they can see some similarities between the two classes, and they can focus together on creating those small groups, and when the classes are changing and interchanging with the teachers, they can stick with those skills that they need to improve on. And with that being said, I'm going to go ahead and pass it over now to STEM Chair Jess Percher. Thank you.
Okay, so we sent a survey to our teachers and our students so we could get their perspectives. We received approximately 90 responses from teachers and 600 from students, and the response overall was positive. Teachers found the lessons to be engaging for our students. The majority of our teachers reported that students now have multiple strategies to demonstrate conceptual understanding of the concepts that they're learning in class. The lessons are able to be differentiated to meet the needs of all of our students, and this is particularly important for our students with special needs and ALS as well. The assessments also have the ability to be modified so they can align the students' needs with the assessments as well. We have paper-based assessments and digital assessments, as Tom and Tanya said. And the online assessment reports provide very detailed data that can be used to drive our instruction moving forward for small group. There was a lot of positive feedback from teachers. These were the comments that I heard most often in the survey, but teachers were saying that students are working through productive struggle and persevering to solve difficult problems, building their skills and their confidence, which is wonderful to see. The program is rigorous and engaging. The resources and assessments can be modified to differentiate instruction for all learners. Students are building conceptual understanding of concepts and have multiple strategies to solve problems. We did receive some constructive feedback from our teachers. These were the main, again, points that I saw arise multiple times, but one of the things about iReady MyPath is that it's a differentiated program built around every child's individual needs. Consistent practice is key to closing the gaps and reaching grade-level proficiency. So it's difficult to have students complete a minimum of two lessons per week during class time, especially for our students that are pulled out during the AIS period, because these students are typically the ones that also need that small group instruction. So assigning 20 minutes of iReady as homework for math twice a week would be instrumental in helping students reach their grade-level proficiency. We also found that the online assessments are only five questions, and they don't offer partial credit. So teachers override those grades in their gradebooks, but what is in their gradebook might not match the digital report, so they wish they had some digital tools on there for students while they're taking the assessment, similar to the state testing platform. And we actually discussed all of these concerns with our iReady reps because they were very valid, especially in this time where we're pushing computer-based testing. And teachers expressed the need that there needs to be time built into the pacing guide to allow for the teaching of prerequisite skills. We will be reviewing the pacing guides this year and making adjustments as needed. We did expect there to be the need for more prerequisites than in the past because this program was just rolled out this year, and students in particularly Grades 3, 4, and 5 have not experienced it from kindergarten up. So we expect to see definitely less need for that in the future as students are learning the program. And our students, I was so thrilled to read their survey responses because you could feel like the energy through them. So these were three that really stood out to me. The triad helps me understand without the teacher's help, so I know if I'm on novice, apprentice, practitioner, or expert level of understanding. And this blew me away because it just shows how students are using their rubrics every day to self-assess. That's where this language came from, and they're owning their learning. Sorry, it's not letting me. Now we're going back, technical difficulties. All right. I like the word "problems" in my math, they're challenging, and the kid wrote in capitals. I love that. So our students are enjoying a challenge, they're not defeated by it, they're empowered by it. I like sharing different strategies with my friends when we turn and talk. A major part of this program is discourse amongst students, and they're engaging in that and discovering different strategies from one another, which is so powerful. Some grows from our students. They said they would like more pictures to go with the questions. This is a very valid concern, especially for students with special needs and English-language learners. They thought the program was challenging, which is good, but they wish the comprehension check questions were worth less points. If I get one question wrong, I lose 20 points. Really interesting to see that students and teachers were really on the same page with this. And again, we do offer partial credit on our own, it just doesn't show up on those digital reports. And a few kids said I do better on paper tests than on computers because it's easier to show my work, which I do as well, and I understand, but with this nature of computer-based testing, the more exposure they get, the more comfortable they are getting. So during a recent iReady learning walk, we had the pleasure of visiting Mr. Renahan's 3rd grade classroom. While iReady has a great deal of structure, it also allows teachers to have autonomy to use the resources in the best way for their students. So before we show you a video of his class in action, Mr. Renahan will discuss how he used a gallery walk to review for a unit assessment. Matthew Renahan.
Just going to put that up a little bit, thank you. So first and foremost, I just want to thank our incredible math and STEM departments for their continued support in rolling out our new math program, not always an easy feat. Since the beginning of my career at Patrick Medford, the importance of creating a student-driven classroom has been highlighted to me by countless school leaders, administrators, and mentors. With this in mind, I began the school year with the mission to truly learn my students inside and out during the early months. Through trials and tribulations, I learned the beginning months of the school year that I have a body of students who learn from a variety of modalities, so then I would need to create and implement creative strategies to best reach their potential. The video is going to be showing me how I took the Form B of our Unit 2 test from iReady and cut and pasted the questions onto chart paper. I gathered students into heterogeneous groups as I consistently urge my students to utilize one another while working through challenges. The video highlights the students' dialogue that they're having, which has been a daily focus for us in math. Through consistency and repetition, my students are both comfortable and confident in debating solutions of various math problems and can give concrete reasonings behind their answers. I, myself, have a small group of Tier 3 students in which I found most important to give them direct instructional support during this time. I am so proud of my students and their incredible work ethic and attention to detail, and just thank you so much for your time and taking a glimpse of my classroom. thank you so much for your time and taking a glimpse of my classroom.
It was wonderful being in Mr. Renahan's class because we saw students of all abilities feeling ready to take on the task of some very challenging problems. They were managing their time. They were encouraging one another. They were using manipulatives. Some were past that. It was just stellar. So, thank you, Mr. Renahan. These are our rubrics that we use. We have them scaffolded. We use one for grades K and 1, one for 2 and 3, and one for 4 and 5. We supplied you a copy of that. So that's what the student in the Student Glows was talking about, I know if I'm a novice, apprentice, practitioner, or expert. We also have Ms. Danielle Richardi from Medford to share her perspectives on the math program.
Good evening. I'd like to thank Dr. Dolly for inviting me to speak about the math program tonight. My name is Danielle Richardi. I currently teach second grade at Medford Elementary. I had the opportunity to pilot the Ready Math program last year, and I'm currently using the program this year. I have seen this program deepen my students' understanding of mathematics by using a student-centered approach. It helps students develop conceptual understanding, build fluency, and apply math to their own lives. The program is based on a five-day session cycle. Most lessons have five sessions. It uses an explore, develop for three days, and refine or review session. For each session, there are student-worked text pages for in-class instruction and independent practice for school or home. What I truly value and love about this math program is the enriching vocabulary and the mathematical language my students are learning and being exposed to. They are able to have math conversations that I have never seen before in my 25-plus years in teaching. It enables them to critically think when problem-solving. I also love the strategies the program implements for students to use as they problem-solve. It incorporates the RDW strategy, the use of open number lines, ten frames, taped diagrams, and drawing and base-ten blocks. The program also has students use various math manipulatives while they are solving problems. Some of these include using the base-ten blocks, connecting cubes, circle disks, mini clocks. The program also includes various graphic organizers, weekly assessments, as well as unit assessments, and a lot of Spanish resources as well. This program will continue to increase the students' performance as it rolls out to the other grade levels from year to year. The program enables students to annotate and break down complex word problems into smaller, more manageable steps while allowing them to grasp and understand the material. I am glad that I have the opportunity to watch my students grow not only intellectually but collaboratively with their peers. I also brought, I don't know if you want to, some work samples of that the students did in my classroom.
Thanks so much, Danielle. And then one other perspective. One of my colleagues is here, Dr. Deland. If you want to come up and share what you're seeing as you walk through the math classrooms, I greatly appreciate you.
Sure. I'm a little more extemporaneous than my colleagues, previous colleagues standing here, but I can concur that the one thing that I've seen throughout the building is math discourse. From kindergarten on up, the students are actually drawing how to respond to a math equation. They're talking about it, using the language of mathematics. I was just in a third-grade class today, so they were talking about fact families and the connections between multiplication and division, and their students were using the appropriate vocabulary. Dr. Dally would have been so impressed, between product and quotient and dividend and divisor. And when one child used it incorrectly, another child just said, excuse me, but do you think we can go back to? And pointed out the mistake the student made when sharing with their peers. And kudos to the teacher for saying, what evidence do you have that the student used the wrong language? The child picked up their book, went to the appropriate page, and read the definition for everyone. So the language is so rich and powerful, and students are feeling empowered to be able to solve and, you know, just feel really confident in what they're doing. So without further ado, I'll pass it along. Thank you.
Okay, I'm getting the evil eye. I'm almost done. I'm almost done. All righty, so we're going to continue providing instructional support through professional learning opportunities. We're going to really focus on the teacher feedback, and we're planning on having a sixth-grade implementation next year. There is, my scholar said, if you have questions for them, feel free to ask. But before we end the presentation, I just wanted to share two things. I'm super excited this year that I've collaborated with my colleagues and middle-school principals, elementary principals. We have a Math Olympia team in 10 buildings. Our first annual event is going to be taking place here at Saxon on March 25th. We have over 90 students that are participating, and Lori's going to provide pizza. Thank you, Lori. And then I'm also super excited, this challenge, the IACS Challenge, the Institute for Advanced Computational Science. I think we've been doing this two years now. This is the first year that we had a finalist, and the student's name is Bailey Stanton. She goes here. She's a sixth-grade student here at Saxon Elementary School. Her teacher is Ms. Shira Gonzalez. She is going to be a finalist this Thursday. She may win some money. I promised her mom I would show you her 59-second video. So, where's my tech? I need that video, please. And then I'm done.
Hi, my name is Bailey, and today I will be discussing my experiment based on Rosalind Franklin's discovery of the DNA double. What I've done is extracted the DNA from a strawberry. Take a look at my steps. While doing it, that it should break down cells. And salt neutralizes DNA molecules. Isn't that cool? Once I finished making my strawberry mixture, I poured alcohol down the side of my glass, and then the DNA started to form. It looked like bubbly, white, and stringy strands. Once I took the DNA out, it felt like slime. As the strawberry mixture set, the more the DNA formed, and a few days later, I had a lot of DNA. Rosalind Franklin was a very intelligent woman who should be more widely known for her discovery of the DNA double helix structure. Without her discovery, we wouldn't even know about genetics.
How timely. We are getting ready to head into Women's History Month. All righty, so that's all I have. I don't know if there's any questions for my scholars or any of the teachers that are here, but I'm good.
I just wanted to thank Dr. Dally and her entire team for that incredible presentation. I just want to make sure I ask one of the Moser girls that is writing so diligently, is there anything we need to know? You've been writing for like 20 minutes. Very thorough. Congratulations.
Ms. Moser, you think you can turn that easel so the entire audience can see how much work you did there? Thank you.
So if I understand you, Ms. Moser, you first read the question carefully, then you unpacked the question to make sure you understood what it was asking, then you demonstrated multiple ways to approach the problem-solving, and then you actually provided the solution and the evidence for why it was the answer that you addressed. Is that correct? I'm very proud of you. Outstanding.
All right, go ahead, Nora. Can you show us your, Nora, can you show us your experiment?
Wow, congratulations.
Thank you very much for that beautiful presentation, Dr. Dally and your team.
And all the teachers that presented this evening as well. The entire team. Thank you all.
Okay, now I'd like to continue on to Presentations and Reports Letter C, which would be a presentation by Generation Citizen.
Dr. Dally, there may be questions from the community, so if you could stay over.
Thank you.
Mr. Carlson.
Good evening. My name is Sean Carlson. I'm a social studies teacher at the high school. I first want to thank the Board of Education and Superintendent Dr. Donna Jones, Assistant Superintendent Lori Canetti, and the rest of administration for not only having us here tonight, but allowing us to present our projects and ideas. We appreciate the time. Thank you very much. I want to thank Mr. Matt Hanley, and my director, and Dr. Randy Rizelwitz for being in attendance also tonight. I just want to say a couple of things briefly before I turn it over to the kids. I know everyone couldn't make it to Civics Day recently, so I just wanted to tell everybody what the class is. Civics, or Generation Citizen, is a class that lets the students pick one issue in the beginning of the year that is related either to the school, or the community, or the town, and they really, in a hands-on way, try to fix or change it for the better. The best part about the class is it comes from them. The amazing part is it gives the students a voice, and it allows them not only to act on that voice, but advocate for themselves and the school, or the community and the town. They work in four teams. There's a legislator team, a community survey team, a community expert team, and the research team. Each team has about three or four students, and they all have their individual responsibilities, but they all work for one common goal or issue together. And this year, they are trying to improve, or update, or renovate our high school library. Secondly, I just want to tell you how great it was to work with these students. They worked hard all year with endless research, field trips, countless interviews with administrators and legislators. Most of you here today in front of me participated, which we thank you for, for feedback. They did between 1,000 and 1,500 surveys with students and teachers and graded every single one of them for our statistics and data. And listen, it all came together for an excellent presentation that we presented a few weeks ago at our Civics Day at our high school. So without further ado, I'm going to introduce the students, but I wanted to tell them and you what a pleasure it was to work with them this year and how proud of them I was all year from day one. All right, so thank you.
Hello, good evening. My name is Juan Carlos Flor, and we are Mr. Carlson's 2025 Civics class. And I would like to collectively say thank you on behalf of myself and my peers for your time and attention. To start us off, we are excited to share with all of you a project in the making, and one we believe that has the potential to make a significant impact in our tight-knit community. It is the renovation of our school library. And throughout this presentation, we will walk you through our process, statistics, and the goals we've set. And at the end, we'll wrap it all up and explain why you should care about this project. And I invite all of you to consider how you might be able to get involved, whether it's through sharing your own expertise, offering your experiences, or simply spreading the word. Every contribution counts. But without further ado, to kick off this presentation, I'd like to invite our first speaker, Ethan, to talk to you a little more about civics. Each speaker will introduce the next.
So let me just talk about a little bit about civics. Civics is a class where students research local topics in their community, and they choose a specific topic to present to political and educational leaders in the order to enact change in our society and schools. Our class's mission is to make changes in our library. We're looking to make updates and renovations to make it more modernized and welcoming. We flip-flopped between a few ideas at first, ranging from a new skate park to just giving a student discount in the community, but we decided that the library would be the most impactful for our school and our students.
Hi, my name is Charlisse Semaday. A part of our journey of renovating our school library is to find inspiration of what we would need and what we would want in our library. So to start off, of what we have in our library, as you can see in the first photo, some of the lights do not work, and a lot of the furniture is ripped up. The carpet is very much dirty, and it's like a tripping hazard as well. There is not many outlets. You have to like sit on the floor to charge your laptop in certain areas. The furniture is ripped up as well, and it's just very like not modernized the way we would like it to be. So the first, one of the schools that we visited was Bayport Blue Point Middle School, and one of the things that we really did like the most about this school specifically was their carpet. So the problem with our carpet is how like the carpet is just like one big carpet. So if anything damages or it's dirty, like you have to rip like a huge chunk of it to like clean out. So with their school and their carpet is panels. So if anything happens, they can rip each panel out and just replace it, and it'll still look good as new. They also have like a lot of like modernized furniture. It's being able to move around, as you can see in the bottom right corner. Like they're able to maneuver all those chairs, the tables, however they want for whatever class that they're going to teach. And the bottom left corner are cubicles that students are able to just study in and have like group conversations in. We also visited the Bayport Blue Point High School. A lot of, like a lot of like this specific high school, like it has more of like an aesthetic type of vibe. It has like a really, really nice aesthetic. I know our school is very much bigger, so we cannot have like many plants on tables because someone most definitely would take that, but... But they do have recreational things, like a little building Lego section, or just a little coloring board, which I think was really cute and nice as well. Because it's like, the library shouldn't just be studying and just reading books all day and doing work all day. It could also be more of a recreational thing where you could just chill and relax, catch a break from your classes and whatnot, and do little recreational things like coloring, building Legos, and just having fun. Another thing about their school, they also have built-in outlets in their table that are open and closed, as you can see in the bottom left corner. I think that's a pretty good safety precaution too, as well. The outlets, you could close it, so when you're done, it's all clean and organized. The last high school we visited was Connect Quot. One thing that I noticed that stood out to me the most was their laptop charging ports. So in our high school, the laptop charging ports are open. You just put in your laptop and you leave it in there. A lot of issues we had with that is people taking the laptops, moving them around, can't find them, or any of the sort. And with their school, they have the laptop, their laptop charging port is monitored by their ID. So you'll tap your ID on it, and it'll show you a selection of which one is available for you. You pick which one you would like, and then open it, put your laptop in, and closes. And when you come back, when you tap your ID, only your slot opens up. They also have really great lighting. They have a lot of space, just like our library. It's very huge and spacious, and the way they use their space, I felt like was really convenient. For example, their cubicles, something really nice about their cubicle is how it's soundproof. And they could change the temperature to either be AC, or to warm it up. And students rent it out as many times as they want. And the seating is also maneuverable, you can move it around. One thing that was really cool about their library as well is that they have a VR, virtual reality, section in the top right corner. It's a small little corner, but students are able to just, again, have recreational use, just use it to play games. They could rent it out for however long they needed to. And yeah, they just really have more of a modernized look that we would like to bring to our library and just utilize everything, honestly.
Good evening. My name is Gavin Henigan. You know, I would like to tell you a couple of problems that we see in our library, maybe some things we would like to renovate, some things we would like to fix. Before we go into that, I just want to thank our librarians, our directors of the library, for showing us around, showing us things that they personally feel like they would like to see, things that they would like to implement, things like that. And with that, we can start talking about things that we see, a little bit of elaboration on Charlisse's point of views from the other high schools, things like that. Okay, so to start off, we would like to talk about the doors and the safety of them. We know previously that the high school had just got all-new doors with the lockdown button. The library doors on the left side on the first floor can only be locked with an Allen key. And I believe it's the right door on the first floor, the lock is broken on that door. So just for safety procedures and things like that, we would like to see that fixed. Maybe not as many windows leading into the hallway, things like that. Or maybe at least curtains to cover those windows. Charlisse was talking about the modular seating and things like that. With the way that the district is moving towards a more project-based learning, trying to prepare us for college to work with others, things like that with the cubicles, we think modular seating, modular tables would help out. We can arrange them differently for the different class settings, different club settings, things like that. We're a one-to-one district. We would love to see some more outlets in our building, in the library. In the library itself, we have the two charging towers. And like Charlisse had said, the ones in Connect Quot were closed. You can use your ID to scan in. Most of our outlets in the library are on the floor and in between bookshelves. So as much outlets as we do have, they're not as accessible as we need them to be. Charlisse was talking about the floor and things like that. If one piece of our carpet gets messed up, we have to rip out the whole carpet. There were tests done to show that there was no asbestos glue. So we would maybe like to see things implementing, maybe with paneling, something more along the lines that could absorb the sound still, but could it be easily replaced if we have to. Things like books, through our surveys, we found that a couple of kids, more than a couple, obviously, but kids were saying that they feel like there aren't as many book selections as they would like. So maybe we can have a chart when you enter in the library that can introduce genres, other series of books, things that we can add into the library for those students. We know we have money in the budget every year for more library books. A lot of that money goes to waste because we don't know the selection kids would like. So things that we can do on our own and implement that way would be awesome, too. Student artwork would be awesome. We know that our library introduces a lot of the CTE fashion and the clubs, things like that. We would love to see some more student artwork around, some more aesthetic changes, things that we can do ourselves, things that if we had, maybe the more... Trying to think of the word, but you know what I'm saying. Just more art, more student artwork, more representation for those students in those art programs that maybe don't get into the art show and things like that. A lot of kids were talking about how they feel like the library is a little too loud. Something we would like to see is maybe a quiet space, something along the lines of a makerspace, where kids can go, they can read their book. Kids can go and separate themselves from the rest of the kids in the library, work on a project, study, make sure all their focus is on what they need to get done by that deadline they need to get it done by. A big idea of why we want to do this is just the idea of preparing for college, project-based learning, and things like that. Some history about our library. So the high school was built in 1973. That was along with the library. I think our carpet was only renovated once around 2003. We've been getting some more furniture and some things like that throughout the years, but we would love to see more. We would love to see things that would show up to modernizing our library, things like that. I would like to call out some accomplishments that we've been able to get done with help from others, people who have listened, people that have been open to our ideas. Accomplishments have been, EPC is bringing in a new lighting system. They're going to be more sustainable lights and things like that. That includes the library, as it includes the rest of the building. Capacity signs in the library that were previously have been falling down have been replaced. They look very clean. They look very uniform. They've been replaced. We love to see that. The mural that has been up in the middle of the library for a long time has just been taken down with our request that we have a new mural that we would like to get put up. After three years, the lift in the library is completely fixed and functional. I would like to thank Frank Massey, Paul Noonan, Dr. R., Dr. Jones, and Dr. Hanley for helping us get those things done, people that knew that they could make that change for us, and they listened. And I love to see that. I appreciate that. All the students appreciate that. And those are big accomplishments that are leading into a lot more along the way. With that, I would love to bring up Sophia. She could tell you a little bit about our surveys, a little bit about what the students said, and a little bit about what the teachers said. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Sophia Scrub, and these are our student surveys. So if you look at our student surveys, most of them are 50/50, but that is because most of our students that did do this survey do not attend the library as much. A lot of them said that during our surveys, it's because they feel like the library is more of a lounge, less of a library feel. They feel that there was more stuff to do in the library. If it wasn't, you know, there wasn't that much, I'm sorry, it just felt more like a library. They also said that they would like it if we had more of like, we have this area in our library, and they kind of felt that if it was, that if they felt if it was more of like, if they felt it was more like there was more snacks, some more stuff to do in the library. This is the teacher survey. So the teacher survey is a lot better. The teachers did say that student productivity would improve with the renovations. So since our library is two stories, on the second story, that is where teachers do teach at for the most part. And since our library is so big, when teachers are on the second floor teaching, it is an open space. So if there's students on the first floor, if they're loud, or if they're noisy, it kind of disrupts the learning process of the students above. And also, going back to what we said earlier on our surveys, we did do about 1,500 student surveys. So we did have a lot of data to collect from it. And I'd like to bring up one.
So as you may have already noticed, this is not a project that can be done in one year. As much as we love that for our school, we know that with permits and going through the process, it's really not possible. But what is, is implementing these changes over a span of time. And that's when we'll talk more about our five-year plan. Now, this plan really takes all the things we've mentioned, functionality, welcoming space, creativity, and safety. Now, the Patrick Medford High School library renovation project seeks to transform our existing library into a modern, functional, and aesthetically pleasing environment that supports the needs through our five-year plan. And just to mention one thing that Gavin talked about was new graduation requirements and new teaching techniques, really rely on project-based learning. We know that's a really important part that a lot of us have been doing. And this class is a project-based learning experience for ourselves. And with that, I'd like to move on to our five-year plan, and we'll have Gavin speak more about that.
Okay, so a little bit about our five-year plan. This was a collection of our ideas. Kyla isn't here today, but Kyla O'Sullivan was the first one to pitch this idea of a five-year plan at us. And we all worked together to find the things that we think over the span of time would be worth it. We understand that this can't be a complete gut job. This can't be something that we renovate floor to roof. So things throughout our five-year plan are little changes that would cause a domino effect to then start the rest of them. So with our five-year plan, in our first year, we would like to maybe remove or remodel the carpet. Charlisse was telling us a little bit about the paneling, something along those lines is something we would like to see first. We understand when the library was built, everything was made with the same color scheme and everything matched. We think with the idea of a new carpet being the first step, we could find that there's more ways to implement that new furniture. There's more ways to implement new aesthetics and things like that, because everything is going to have to be one cohesive build. We would like to replace outdated and worn-down furniture. Kind of like I was saying before, the carpet would cause for the new color scheme. The carpet would cause for more things like that. With the new furniture, we can go for the more modular seating, the desks with the outlets on them, things that allow us to use our one-to-one devices that the district provides for us. In our third year, we would want to add more outlets, add more outlets around the libraries, things that aren't in the middle of the floor, maybe a couple outlets on the wall. We had heard from a contractor that there were some libraries that had outlets that come down from the ceiling. We think that would be a cool implementation, maybe with the new tables. After that, in our fourth year, would be updating technology. We only have five desktop computers in the whole library. So maybe updating our technology with those desktops, maybe getting a couple more, or just getting new ones. We feel like that would bring more kids in. It would help the printing process a lot more. We think that would be really beneficial. And in our fifth year would be the aesthetics, decorating. Bayport Blue Point High School, like Charlisse said, they had a lot of plants around, a lot of inspirational quotes. They were saying a lot of things with the shelves. They had books facing forward, things that they thought would be more eye-grabbing, things like that. Those aesthetic changes we can make ourselves, and those aesthetic changes are things that we think we can do on our own. But we want to handle the things that we can't do by ourselves with the help of everyone else here. Yeah, thank you. We want everyone to leave being proud of Pat Med, talking about the amazing library that they saw get done with Mr. Carlson civics class when we leave. You know, thank you guys so much. I appreciate it.
And just to speak about what Gavin had mentioned about the contractor. We did have a contractor come in, and he gave us an estimate. And if you'd like the numbers, we do have it on file. But just to summarize it, he gave us an entire chart, including flooring, flooring finish, install, including prep and work, and removal of the carpet. We have new furniture, tables, chairs, and cubicles, power for the new furniture. We also have railings and what we talked about, the glass and windows in the library. We also have all those numbers, and it comes to about 200,000. And when we look at that number, we really think about the material being used, the labor. Obviously, students, we don't really know much about numbers and money yet. But again, that's why we ask that you guys reach out for your expertise. We know that all of you here are very experienced. We know that you're up here for a reason, and we thank you for that. But the last thing I'd like to mention is the big why. Why should you care about this project? And when we're talking about future generation, it essentially becomes a legacy project. Coming in here, I saw a couple students here, and I remember when I used to go here, when I used to go to Tremont in Oregon. And when we're doing this project, we're thinking about them, you know? And when we prioritize our library as a vibrant and welcoming space, we're not only investing in education, but also the potential of every student who walks through those doors. One quote from Tania Ortiz Martinez, Policy Analysis for Education, says, "For decades, studies have shown a positive correlation between strong school library programs and student achievement." So when we think about that quote, we think about each book, each resource, each program becomes a stepping stone towards success for our youth. By creating an environment that nurtures curiosity and learning, we equip the next generation with the tools they need to affect positive change in our community. The library isn't ready to foster those needs. Other schools have already moved on to a modern library. Why haven't we? You should care about this subject because it ensures that the future is bright for all who call our community home. Now, with that, I'd like to again thank Dr. R. and Dr. Hanley for all the help they've given us through getting all the interviews and really going to New York as well. I just want to thank you very much for that, and all of you for your attention. And with that, we'll close our presentation.
I'd just like to commend each and every one of the students that so articulately and eloquently presented, and certainly Mr. Carlson for facilitating the entire class project. I want to say to you that your voice truly does matter. We really do listen to you. And there have been many projects in the past by Generation Citizen's classes that have been incorporated. We have made them a reality. And it's so important for us to hear your voice, to know that your voice matters, to know that you've done all this incredible research and presented it. So I really am proud of each and every one of you. I also thank you for coming back to present after your class is finished. The class is done, and you took time out of your busy schedules, which I know you've already moved on to a new semester. And you're here tonight because you care, and you're passionate about what you're asking us to consider. So I really do commend each and every one of you. Well done. Thank you.
I'd like to call the students up to the front. We'd like to come up and take a picture with the board.
Thank you very much for that wonderful presentation. Okay, next up, moving on to number seven, which would be report by ex-officio student member Ella McCann, and when she's completed, we'll go to community comments and questions.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Ella McCann. I hope you are all doing very well, and I'm looking forward to this lovely break. Welcome to February 10th, the business meeting. I am the ex-officio student member of the Board of Education, and I will be discussing what has been going on in our buildings from now and since January. So, January was packed with excitement at Bay Elementary. Families put their knowledge to the test at trivia night, enjoying a fun-filled evening of friendly competition. They transformed their gym into a movie theater for movie night, featuring two short films, popcorn, and a full concession stand. Bay students even took their school spirit beyond the classroom, cheering on the Stony Brook Seawolves at a men's basketball game. Our students had an unforgettable moment participating in the fan tunnel, high-fiving the players as they took the court. Oregon Middle School had a guest speaker with Mr. Sundahl's classes from the field of nursing, from Mr. RiRi. "Thank you sincerely for this wonderful opportunity to meet such a wonderful crew of faculty and students. The students were so well-behaved and asked great questions for me. He looks forward to making a future visit. Great job, Oregon, for representing Pat Med with pride." Also, at Oregon Middle School, many events have happened over the past month. They held a peer leader swearing-in ceremony, made meals for the local food bank, held an exciting battle of the classes, and held a Holocaust survivor to share his experiences with the eighth graders, as he's a grandfather of one of the students. At Eagle Elementary, the fourth graders visited the Brookhaven National Lab for hands-on learning. Students and staff dressed like they were from the '80s to celebrate the 80th Day of School. And Eagle held its annual STEAM night on January 16th. Thank you to all of the parent and teacher volunteers for their hard work in making this a great success. Special thanks to Ms. Carrie Hayes for chairing the event, and to the Medford Fire Department for bringing the ladder truck to the egg drop challenge. Fifth grade at Tremont Elementary School organized and ran a successful fundraiser to support their class trip. Students sold snowballs to raise money to support their cause. The culmination of the fundraiser was a class snowball fight. All grade five students participated and had a great time. Also, all of Tremont engaged in many learning activities to celebrate Martin Luther King Day. Students wrote letters, read books, and participated in many learning activities in remembrance of this great man and his legacy. This week, third grade went to the movies for a fun and educational field trip as well. They are currently busy getting set up for their spectacular PARP week. Keenan Elementary School celebrated students who competed 100 or more lessons on iReady, which since launching this recognition initiative, student engagement has increased greatly in mathematics and reading. In December, students completed 2,958 math lessons, which rose to 4,309 in January. For reading, 2,544 lessons increased to 3,908 lessons in January. This is amazing growth and great job to all involved. At South Ocean Middle School, they hosted a memorable evening where parents were given an in-depth overview of programs of studies, scheduling, and various supports for their child's success. Here, they had the opportunity to collaborate on a beautiful painting to make memories and celebrate their time in middle school thus far. And lastly, my personal favorite, what an incredible musical our high school put on. I was lucky enough to see it this past weekend, and I am constantly so impressed by the talent in our schools. It was truly one of the best musicals that the high school has ever put on. Great job to all involved. And with that, thank you so much for your time. I hope you have a great rest of your night, and here's to another month of involvement, support, and spirit. Thank you.
Thank you, Ella. Okay, we're going to move on to item number eight, which is public comments. And as a reminder, at this time, the floor is open to anyone who would like to comment on the consent agenda and/or on any of tonight's presentations only. Each speaker is limited to three minutes with no sharing of time. Mrs. DeLeva will maintain the clock and inform you when there's 30 seconds remaining. The public comment portions of the meeting provide an opportunity for our community members to share their thoughts, concerns, and questions to the Board of Education. Please be mindful that your comments are expected to be courteous and must remain respectful at all times. The Board is here to listen and cannot provide immediate feedback or engage in open dialogue. Any necessary follow-up will be noted and provided at a later date. Thank you. Any questions or comments?
Hello, Shari Costello, Medford. First, I continue to be incredibly impressed by our teachers and our students here at Patrick Medford. They really, the math presentation was fantastic. Our Generation Citizen class, year after year, I just, more and more by their ability to come up and speak about what they're, what they're learning, what they're doing, what they hope for our school and our community. I just think we have an amazing, amazing staff and amazing group of students. It's, it's really phenomenal. So, thank you for all of that wonderful information. I think our students have worked really hard today, the, the young ones from the elementary modeling their work. I mean, I watched that little girl over there the entire time the presentation was going on. She was just working and working and working. I thought, was really phenomenal. I like that the conversation came up with iReady and how they can further our students' learning as it applies to computer-based testing. I think our kids are too much on computers and too much on device, but I do like the split between some paper-based testing and some computer-based testing, especially if it can give them a leg up on what's coming down from the state and their requirements. So I think that's excellent. I think we have future leaders here in our Project Citizen class, and I'm sure that Mr. Maisy was impressed to hear them quoting some EPC. I just, I was really blown away by it all, and I, I just wanted to compliment that. I do have a question on the consent agenda. I read in here, you're approving today the adoption of policy 6145.3, interscholastic athletics. When I looked at that, it said that Schedule A and Schedule B would include the forms that families would use in order to access different pieces related to transportation. Those forms were not attached, so I do know with the new website, making sure all of that stuff is linked appropriately, there was a link in there to something else, just a comment for the future so that it could be attached there. And then it indicated that that form needs to be given to the principal. The way that I've utilized that form, if it's the same one, and again, I couldn't see the form, so I wasn't sure, I've had to forward it to the athletic director, Mr. Cracco, so I'm just not sure if the language in that is accurate, and I wanted to make it known before you vote. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Costello. Yes, sir.
Um, Shari, I'm not sure if you're talking about the transportation form that parents fill out, that the athletes, in order to pick up the athletes, is that what you're talking about, that one? Okay. Yes, that, that form is attached to, when we sign onto final forms, that's one of the, that is attached when we sign our, our students up or our children up for final forms under the sports. That athletic transportation form is attached under final forms. It, it's always required. It's always required that we fill it out, that if we take a child home from an event, you're supposed to fill out that and give it to the coach. Otherwise, the child is supposed to take the bus home, because that's how the coach handles accountability. Okay, thank you.
Hi, Jody Moran, Medford. I just wanted to add an additional thought on to ex-officio Ella McCann's reference to this past weekend's high school musical performance. As a parent volunteer, I just want to say thank you all for attending. Administrators, board members, your presence means more to the students than I think you realize. We know because we're behind the scenes. And also to, to everybody who came out and donated to help us be able to provide for the students. They work extensive hours, just like you guys, you know what it's like to work past nine o'clock, and these students were at school at seven in the morning, there till after 9:00 PM, and we are so grateful for the sustenance that you provided. I know that they were beyond thrilled just to have grapes. So, I just wanted to express my sincerest thanks, not only for being present, but for also just being community members and understanding how important it is to look out for our students. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Moran. Any further questions or comments? Okay, we're going to move on to number nine, which would be the acceptance of the consent agenda. Can I have a motion? Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
The consent agenda has successfully passed. Okay, moving on to item number 10. There were no items removed from the consent agenda for a separate vote. Number 11, the informational items, policy first reading. Policy 5114 is up for reading, procedures for dealing with pupils who are insubordinate, disorderly, or truant, or whose conduct endangers the safety, morals, or health or welfare of others. Moving on to item number 12, actions arising out of the executive session. There are a number of resolutions coming out of the exec session, and they'll be read by Mr. DeLeva.
Okay, actions arising out of executive session. Be it resolved, the Board of Education hereby approves the amendment to employment contract, employment agreement dated February 10th, 2025, between the Patrick Medford Union Free School District and Dr. Donna Jones, and authorize the Board President to sign said amendment on behalf of the Board. Our second resolution, be it resolved, the Board, Board of Education hereby accepts the letter of resignation for purposes of retirement from Dr. Donna Jones, dated February 10th, 2025, with an effective resignation date of June 30th, 2025. All in favor?
We need a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Run it, Ed.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Resolution passed.
Thank you, Mr. DeLeva. Okay, with that, we're going to move on to item number 13, which is the superintendent's report by Dr. Donna Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening to the, all the community members here. My report will be a response to what has just been read. The Board and I have been discussing when I would be retiring for several years. In tandem, we have also been discussing succession plans to ensure there would be a seamless transition to new leadership. And while I have another year to go on my contract, I believe now is an opportune time to step down, explore new opportunities, and give myself more time to spend with my family and my friends. The Board has accepted my resignation this evening for the purposes of retirement effective June 30th, 2025. I will be completing 31 years in education, and I actually have actually completed 31 years at this point in, in the year, and I'm truly proud of some of the transformative work that has occurred during my tenure as superintendent. I certainly would not have been able to accomplish as much without the unwavering support of the Board of Education, members of my cabinet, administrators, teachers, and dedicated support staff. Together with our students and their families, we not only survived, but thrived in some of the most historically challenging of times. When I was appointed as superintendent of schools six years ago, I inherited eight of our 11 schools being designated as schools in need of improvement. Today, only one of our schools has that designation, and that school is making significant progress every year. In addition, I inherited a special education department requiring targeted skills assistance from the state due to consistently missing the mark for indicator compliance. Six years later, our district was removed from targeted assistance status, and we have made significant improvements to state indicator compliance. These two categories of improvement have been a few of my proudest accomplishments. I'm also proud that we have adopted measures to provide inclusive and welcoming environments to all students. This has included restorative practices and approach that provides all students with an opportunity to learn from their mistakes. And through this practice, I, along with all principals, assistant principals, deans, social workers, psychologists, and guidance counselors, have been able to get to know many families and assist them in some of their most challenging times. I'm equally proud that when other districts were facing budget cuts due to state aid reductions, we were able to sustain all programs, improve supports for children, and retain all staff members. Last but not least, I am also proud that we were able to band together as a united community to, to pass a tremendous bomb referendum that will provide benefits to generations of students for years to come. And as we fought through a pandemic, wildfires, bomb threats, unfunded mandates, culture wars, and fiscal cliffs, I can proudly proclaim that our district and our community never took our eyes off the care and concern of our children. Many of my days over the last six years have started with prayer for our students and their families, because I wanted nothing less for every child that I have served than I would want for my own grandchildren. This job cannot be done without grit, determination, and care for the entire system. To the Board, staff, and community, we are living through very challenging times that have seemed too often as though society at large has lost its moral compass, along with the civility, respect, and care for humanity. If I may offer one humble suggestion as I pass this prestigious mantle, it would be that you continue to move this district forward by pledging your commitment to caring deeply for our students, believing that all students have the right to learn regardless of race, socioeconomic status, or developmental disabilities, that you, and that you imbue passion and purpose when times are difficult to remind us why we do this challenging but immensely rewarding work every single day. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Jones. On behalf of On behalf of my colleagues on the Board of Education, I would like to express our heartfelt appreciation for Dr. Donna Jones as she announces her retirement effective June 30th, 2025. Dr. Jones has dedicated countless years of service to our district, and her impact on our community cannot be overstated. Under her leadership, we have seen remarkable vision come to life, one that prioritizes the needs of all students, staff, and community members. Dr. Jones has an extraordinary ability to identify long-term goals, ensuring that our district not only addresses immediate challenges, but also prepares for a successful future. Her strategic thinking and compassionate approach have created an environment where everyone can thrive. Dr. Jones, thank you for your unwavering commitment, your inspirational leadership, and your dedication to fostering an inclusive and supportive community. Your legacy will be felt for generations to come, and we are deeply grateful for all that you have accomplished. As you embark on this new chapter, know that you take with you the appreciation and admiration of all of us. We wish you all the best in your future endeavors. Over the next few months, the Board will be interviewing candidates to assume the position of interim superintendent of schools for the start of the 2025-2026 school year. We are looking to make this selection by the end of May or sooner to allow for a transition period with Dr. Jones and the Board. In terms of selecting our next superintendent of schools, we intend to do a comprehensive, far-reaching superintendent search. Over these few months, we will be looking at what the best course of action would be in terms of putting the superintendent search process in place, including speaking with professional search firms that specialize in assisting public school districts in this area. The process will include stakeholder representation with the input solicited from parents and guardians, community members, and of course, our administrators, teachers, and district support personnel. Our goal is to have the search process begin sometime in the fall of 2025, with the selection being made in the spring of 2026. The new superintendent appointment would be for the start of the 2026-2027 school year that begins in July of 2026. As more information becomes available on the search process, we will of course update the community every step of the way. Again, thank you, Dr. Jones. Okay, we're going to move on to number 14, which is discussion topics, field testing discussion.
Well, first I just wanted to share an email that I sent to Brian Fessler, who helped us with our resolution, and he responded back, so I wanted to show that with all you guys. Yes, the NISBA resolution. So I just was asking him about an update for our resolution about field testing, and I just went on to tell him that once again, our schools have been selected to participate in field testing, and just wanted to see where we're at basically with all of that. And then I also did ask him if he knew that of a letter from SED that explained, and I know sometimes the verbiage is it's required, but it's not mandated, or it's mandated and it's not required, so I did ask him about that. He said, thanks for reaching out. He has also C.C. Kelly in this too, because she reached out to Kathy Romano for the same, same question. Shortly following the adoption of this position in October, our staff at SED reached out to us to make sure they understood the position that was approved. We had a discussion about our business meeting process, et cetera, and shared the exact position statement language with them. They indicated that the department planned to do some work on these issues in the upcoming months and committed to including NISBA as part of those discussions specifically based on our position statement. And then he just went on to say, a lot of the statewide education focus right now is understandably on the state budget and the federal EOs, but your outreach is a good reminder for me to check in with the department on this to see if there were any more updates, and he will do that and get back to us. So basically, I just, you know, wanted to say that, and I know I asked for, for that letter that we sent last time, and that was a letter from Gersio. So I, I still, I know I have nothing to lose by saying, let's send back the field testing. Principals, administrators, they have their licenses, they're all of that, so no one is going to direct anybody to do something that will affect their career. But what I continue to ask is, you know, from State Education Department, a clear answer on that, and it, to me, it doesn't exist. I haven't seen that document from them.
So when we, may I, Mr. President?
Thank you.
When we sign our information every year, there is a particular form that I have to, when we submit our financials every year, our S T. Three, our S A. One Hundred, all of that documentation, there are things that I have to attest to as superintendent, and they include all of these checklist of items, one of which involves field testing. And so it is part of a checklist that I have to attest to in order for us to be eligible for state aid and in order for us to submit the documentation to the state on an annual basis. So you don't see it in the form of a letter, it's an attestation of things. For instance, it could be something like the, the flags when we get directions from the governor's office that we are going to comply with raising flags and lowering flags in accordance with their directive. There are certain things that I have to attest to. It's a very long list of things.
Thank you, Dr. Jones.
Well, I know, again, the Board has gone to that next level of taking it to NISBA. Again, it kind of gets stuck in NISBA. I sometimes wonder, they do a great conference, a lot of great training stuff, but as far as the resolution stuff, they don't really do very much. But, you know, we've always done a letter, and we've always sent that up to SED, and I think part of what Diane is looking at is, we need to state our position. We're not going to, like you said, put anybody's careers at risk. We had done that years back, and we got a nasty lever, letter back to the administrator saying, you're going to lose your license. No, but I think we do need another letter to go up to the state and say, you know, what is this whole field testing thing? You know, it's like field testing. Teachers, we're going to start field testing your quizzes every week. You know, it's crazy. Like, you guys know how to write a test and give a test. We talked about all the things we're doing in math, yet somehow the state feels that the tests that they're giving out need to be tested to see if they're good. Like, you guys can't write a test? I mean, it's utterly ridiculous. So I think we just need to state it again, that our students don't need to be exposed to more testing to test your tests.
Thank you, Mr. D'Onofrio. Okay, Diane, Dr., Trustee Andrade, you good?
Yep.
Okay, all right. So now we're going to move on to number 15, committee reports, and we're going to start with Buildings and Operations, which is going to be Trustee Krieger.
I am ready this time. I'm good this time. All right, so we met, we had a kind of full meeting. We met on January 30th. We discussed the next steps for the Max Temperature Law, which comes into effect in September 2025, and we are ahead of the curve since we have a plan for this, so we're kind of four steps ahead of everybody else who's behind the eight ball. But in, in the meantime, BOCs and other agencies are looking for guidance for implementation because, again, it's a big ask, and there's going to be issues with everybody looking to do this at the same time. So we are looking for more guidance on that. We discussed the Public Health Law 267, which advises us that we have to have feminine products in all bathrooms. We're in compliance with that. Mr. Noonan took care of that. We're done. We spoke about our peace polls with Ms. Carter, who is in the audience today, brought to our attention that an outside, I forgot the name of your group though, Patrick Peace Project, I'm sorry. The Patrick Peace Project has donated peace polls for each school, so we're working on a plan to have a dedication and have them put into all the schools. So I know Ms. Carter is working with Mr. Maisy on that. Did you want to add anything on that?
Good evening. No, we had a very productive meeting today. We're going to facilitate that at all the buildings, but to take the next step is to accompany not just the installation of them at the schools, but to do it in conjunction with some kind of
A dedication.
Or an event that can actually really drive home the point of the great work that they're doing.
Right. We don't want to just stick a poll in front of a school. We want the schools to understand what they mean and how it ties into our district's philosophies. So we really thank you for, your whole group for bringing them to us. We spoke about the EPC Performance Contract. Mr. Maisy and Mr. Noonan meet with the architects and the EPC consultants at every other week, and they are going to be coming to our March meeting to give us a presentation on all their work. And then lastly, we spoke about the Bay Edition, which is another thing that Mr. Noonan and Mr. Maisy meet with the architects and Mr. Mendez, the principal from Bay, every two weeks, and that is anticipated to be completed in September of 2026. We do not have a meeting right now for February because it is budget month, but we will be meeting in March again. So when we have a date, we will let you know. Oh, you got it?
Yeah, March 6th.
All right, we're meeting on March 6th at 4:00 P. M., I assume.
Thank you, Trustee Krieger. Okay, next one up is Finance. That would be Trustee D'Onofrio.
Thank you, Mr. President. So we had our meeting on January 16th. Mr. Maisy and the, the whole business office was in attendance. They did a great job again of presenting how transparent we are with our, our finances. They're, they're posted, they're available. We went through how you can find them on the website. Dorian Lamb did a great job of presenting everything about, you know, all the items that we, we present, and it was a great lead-in meeting to then the budget meetings that then occurred, you know, basically a few days, few weeks after or whatever. So, Mr. Maisy, do you have anything you wanted to add about that? Because I know you were talking about some of the funding aspects. Of course, we talk about, you know, again, the government, the state's budget, the governor's budget, and the amendments to that, how we could be losing money. Anything you want to just share?
Just that, you know, we, what we try to do with that, with that committee is, you know, the finance piece is, it's vast, and we want to share all the different things that we're encountering on a, on a regular basis. Some of the examples that come up in the committee, and that's what's really beneficial, are the conversations that take place of how we're trying to utilize all different sources, whether they be grant-funded, whether they be from other sources that we have such as SmartBond, EPC, and how we really try to put them to good use in the district. Because if I tie it back to what the students were saying earlier, just for instance with the library project, we hear these things, and we always try to find out, how can we facilitate them? They're not always easy to do within the confines of a normal or typical budget. So we're always strategizing on how we can do this and make these things a reality. Some are faster, some take longer, but that's really what's most engaging about this, this committee. And, you know, we talked about this with, within the context of the bond that was passed last year, and how we are already starting to move forward, and that ahead of schedule. And that has the financial implications. That will be shared with the community because that was a big point of last year's presentations. So as that information now comes to fruition and solidified, we're going to share that out with the community to let them know what those impacts will be. So more to come on that, and we'll update that, update you with that on the, on the website itself.
And I'd be remiss if I didn't point out again the fact from the Finance Committee, from the Business Office, the amount of gratitude that this community needs for Dr. Jones. When she started her career here, she started as the Assistant Superintendent of Business, the position that Mr. Maisy has now. Of course, Mr. Maisy was basically one of her apprentices to that position, and Mr. Maisy is doing a fantastic job. But, you know, the district had some financial difficulties way back when, and Dr. Jones came in and she said, I'm going to straighten this out. Just give me five years. All right, give me six years, but she did, and this community really needs to be grateful to the fact that, like other districts, and you mentioned in your, your speech before, that other districts are in financial disarray with some of the conditions that are going on. We're lost in, in state aid. This district is solid financially. We are extremely solid, and that has to do with the work that Doc, the foundation that Dr. Jones put forth. So, Dr. Jones, thank you.
Thank you, Trustee D'Onofrio. Up next is district-wide technology, and that would be me. So we're going to go over, we had a meeting on February 5th. I was really sick and did not attend, but I have all the minutes from Mr. Richthof of what transpired at that meeting. First thing they talked about was website, the website redesign projects, and here were some of the items that they went over. The contact numbers, verified that the contact numbers for schools can be found under the "Our Schools" locations. Contact numbers for individual administrators can be found on the administrative page, but Mr. Richthof made it appear without having to click on any or each person. Departmental numbers can be found on the departmental pages. He added a calendar search feature to the website. As far as Board of Education recordings, it was verified that these were never news items and always housed on the recordings section, which is easier now. It's under the Board of Education, Meetings/Recordings. Recordings are usually available within a few days after the event, aside from any other magical technological issue. Quick links, he verified that he was unable to move the quick links above video as was suggested, and the navigation icons, he has put in a request with Final Site, our website vendor, to see if there's a way to change the Tier III icons to something similar to the Tier II that is larger and easier to see. They discussed the E-Rate Phase One, replaced all the network switches at the high school with the 25 gigabyte switches. That's completed. Replaced the core switch at the high school. Configuration and installation of that is complete. Waiting on a date to perform the swap as we would need to bring down all phones and internet during that turnover. Phase Two, they have submitted a winner for the bid, which was approved tonight in our February meeting. Next up was, they discussed instructional application and usage licensing. Mr. Richthof had sent out a survey to all directors with the help of Mrs. Canetti, requesting that directors submit a response for every application utilized by their teachers. This will help the district compare what we have versus what we're using. Along with this, we were provided directors, the principals, the capability to view analytics through their class link. Next up was discussion of a policy for artificial intelligence. The committee members were asked to complete a survey to help develop this policy. It was given through a, a form that the survey can be filled out, and they needed the form back by February 21st, and within that, they also provided certain policies to review to help them guide which statement should be made in the AI policy. There were cyberbullying, technology and acceptable use, photocopying of copyrighted materials for the classroom, and computer education. Our next meeting is on 3/19, and another topic that was discussed quickly was, it was requested to have a meeting with the AP teachers to discuss technology concerns for the exams, and that was our meeting. Our next one again will be on March 19th, as I stated. Next up would be the extracurricular program, which is Trustee Jennings and Trustee Andrade.
We, we didn't have a meeting yet. The next one is February 26th, at 5:15.
Thank you. Okay, instructional and student support programs, and that would be Trustee Salazar.
We have yet to have our February meeting. That will take place this Thursday. It's scheduled for this Thursday currently at South Ocean Middle School, 4:30 in the South Comm. in the South Conference Room.
Thank you, Trustee Salazar. And the final committee is Legislation, and that would be Trustee Smith.
The Legislative Committee didn't meet, but we did go to the Longwood Legislative Breakfast, where all of our local electeds, the local electeds, not the congressional electeds, were there. There were several updates from, a lot of art, a lot of music, impressive stuff. There was some information on the governor's foundation aid proposals. David Wicks, CEO for BOSI's, talked about changing needs and demographics of our students. And we had several questions who were asked, questions asked by people in attendance about updating the civil service exam, potentially changing the timeline for zero emission buses. I thought it was interesting that we're changing the language from electric buses to zero emission buses, which could maybe make this transition a little easier. Or legislators seem to, a lot of the legislators seem to be in favor of just killing the whole thing altogether. 211 waiver extensions for retirees who might, so that they can earn more than $35,000 without that affecting their pensions. That was a question that was asked and some discussion over. There was an interesting conversation about Child Victims Act claims, asking for help with that. And one of, I don't remember which legislator, Dr. Cohen, said it, but there was an actual potential solution there. There's a potential fund that could maybe be accessed by some of the school districts. Right. So the liquidation fund is held by the state, and it is funded by the insurance companies. So that might help some districts who have been devastated by some of these claims. It was a good meeting. That's it. Thank you. Our next meeting is when? March?
Thursday, March 13th.
March 13th, thank you.
I'm going to tack on to ours. What was great about our Legislative Breakfast was that we had one of our student representatives there, and a lot of the other schools had student representatives, and it was really good to have the students there and hear their voice and see them excited and actively participating.
One of the demonstrating students was actually, was injured when she was five years old in a car accident, profoundly disabled, and was playing-
Paraplegic.
Paraplegic. And was playing music. I don't remember the name of the piece that she was playing, but she played music via her motorized computer. With her, oh, then iMotion computer. Amazing.
Thank you, Trustee Smith. Okay, moving on to item number 16, which is Community Comments. Just a reminder, the Board of Education allows this time at the conclusion of its regular meetings for comments from residents and attendants on any topic. Please note that any person wishing to speak at this time shall comply with all provisions of the Board policy. We remind you to keep your comments to a three-minute maximum and to conduct yourself in a respectful manner. Please address school matters only and refrain from addressing topics related to personnel matters or individual students. Such concerns should be discussed privately with the superintendent or administrator at an appropriate time. The Board is here to listen and cannot provide immediate feedback or engage in open dialogue. Any necessary follow-up will be noted and provided at a later date.
Hi.
Hi. Please state your name and your address.
Rayanna Schmaliker, North Summit Avenue, Patrog. And I just wanted to express my gratitude for the letter posted to Parent Square on February 5th regarding our undocumented community members. Schools are not only ethically obligated to provide every student with a free and appropriate public education, but they're legally required to do so. The Supreme Court ruling in the 1982 case of Plyler v. Doe ruled that states cannot deny public education to children based on their immigration status. Your letter underscored the fact that our district remains committed to all students, and for that, I am thankful. In addition, while it's true that schools must cooperate with criminal investigations, immigration status is a civil issue, not a criminal one. Historically, standing up for what is right has often been met with resistance, and I wanted to take the opportunity to publicly thank you for being the upstanders that you expect our children to be. And in light of your announcement, I thank you even more.
Thank you very much for that.
Good evening. My name is Lisbeth Carrillo, 11 Marvin Street in Patrog. I am here to thank you for that letter. Thank you, Dr. Jones. It meant a lot, so much, and you empowered so many kids with that letter and that support. And we know that you went through a hard time last week, and we truly appreciate all the support of you and the Board. Let me just read a couple of things that I wanted to say. I am here tonight to show support for the PatMed School District as some other parents came tonight. Last week, the district faced criticism from its commitment to providing a safe and welcoming environment for all students, a place where they can focus on their education without fear of distractions related to their legal status. No student should have to worry about being targeted. My daughter goes to school to learn, grow, and enjoy her education, just like every other child, and my child should never witness agents taking students. She goes to school to learn. We have also seen how enforcement policies can have significant consequences. Recently, the county lost a $60 million lawsuit for following ICE orders, yet ICE itself was protected from liability. This highlights the importance of ensuring that policies prioritizing fairness do not, and do not negatively impact our communities, especially our students. Some parents are here tonight to express their appreciation for the superintendent and the school board, who are prioritizing both safety and education. We recognize your efforts and stand with you in support of a positive learning environment for all children. And some of the students also created their change.org, and it was really nice to see how all the students got together and they did this petition. I don't know if you received it, but from here, I would say, from the Latino community, I would say only two of us have signed because it didn't go around as much, but they're here showing the support. And right now, there's like, I think, like 260, 270 signatures of students and some parents. And that's just, you know, internal, just friends, not making it public for everyone to sign. But I truly believe that all of PatMed really appreciates your efforts, and thank you for having that strength, because that was a lot of strength to stand up to something that right now we're going through, and thank you. And not only for, I don't think standing up was only for the undocumented, but really for all children. No child should see that type of, you know, actions in a school. My daughter's not in jail, my daughter's not going somewhere. She's going to school to learn, and that's the only thing I want my daughter to witness.
30 seconds.
So, thank you so much, and thank you. Thank you for, and please, for anyone, for a future superintendent, we really want someone that will also back all the students and really focus on the education of everyone. Thank you again. I appreciate it, Dr. Jones.
Thank you.
My name is Joanne Durvich. I'm a parent here in PatMed. I live on Sholomfeld Boulevard. I have three children in the school district. We moved here to Patrog 10 years ago because of the rich diversity here. So I also want to thank you for standing up for my neighbors, my children's friends, and for making sure that all of our children have a safe environment to go to school. I know that you've paid a price for that. I appreciate that. I respect your decision to retire, and congratulations on a successful career. I also want to echo the previous speaker and urge you, as we transition leadership, to find someone that shares the same moral compass that Dr. Jones demonstrated in her six-year tenure, but especially over the last few weeks. So I want to thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Michelle Almartina, and that's 111 Swan Lake Drive in Patrog. I would just like to take a minute to thank Dr. Jones for everything she has done for this district over the many years of her service. The very first board meeting I attended was the night that Dr. Jones was sworn in officially as a superintendent. That night was one I will never forget because they did not make that easy for you. That night, you showed me what a strong and courageous woman you were, and I left feeling that you were totally committed to our students and our community. In the days to follow, I was invited to your office to speak with you. I found you to be caring and wonderful person who shared your personal and professional background. You were experienced, you were smart, and determined. For years, you faced many obstacles out of your control, including the pandemic and what you had inherited from the previous administration. And you never wavered. You stayed strong and persevered. I want to thank you for challenging me to be a better parent who sees the best for all of the students, not just mine, and encouraging me to be involved community member that has been made to feel like my child and I have a voice and you hear it, and for providing me an opportunity to be involved in this wonderful family we call Patrog Medford School District. I am eternally grateful for everything you have accomplished over your time here at PatMed and for supporting all of our children. While I am absolutely heartbroken that you will not be handing my son his diploma at graduation, I am so very happy for you, and I wish you all the best. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Almartina. Would anyone else like to come up?
Good evening. I'll save my Dr. Jones comments for the end, if you don't mind. I'm going to start with, I missed last meeting because of the flu, but I would like to compliment our varsity and JV cheerleaders on hosting the very first competition that we've had here at the Patrick Medford School District. It was on Sunday, I believe, January 14th or something. It was incredibly successful, and we could not have done any of that without the support of the Board of District Office giving approval, Mr. Maisy, obviously Mr. Craco. And certainly, I want to thank Mrs. Deleva and her husband, Mr. Deleva, because they supported us so much that day. They spent their entire day there volunteering with us and helping us and providing as much as they possibly could. They went above and beyond, and I'm really very, very grateful. The entire cheer team had a very successful day, and we look forward to hosting again. So with regard to future superintendent, and please, again, give me a moment to get to Dr. Jones, but I've heard the, we will have a wide search prior to this, as was just stated, although I don't think it was accurate portrayal of, hopefully she wasn't discussing my comments from that night about not making it easy for Dr. Jones. Honestly, it was more about the Board, and many of you were sitting on the Board at that time, six years ago in December, when I stood up and said, "You made a commitment to our community to have a wide search, and you didn't follow through on that, whether it was the right decision or the wrong decision." And at the time, I didn't have any real information about what kind of a job Dr. Jones would be doing, but I did express that as you made that commitment to our community, you needed to follow through with it. So I certainly do hope the timeline you've laid out, the conversation that you plan on having, the firm that you're going to be employing, whether it be BOSI's or some other, to look far and wide to find someone who would best suit our community is really, really important. I'm completely caught off guard by tonight's announcement. I'm not sure if the other parent who spoke so eloquently was as surprised as I am this evening, and so please forgive me. I am quite taken aback. I think that your intentions have always been in the interest of our students, the way you brought Student Voice as a platform, the way that you've supported our district in financial solvency and making sure that we can continue to move forward and make good decisions for our children. There have been plenty of times that I've stood up and not had 100% agreement with policy or with decisions, and you've always given an opportunity to speak about those. We've always been able to have a very fair discourse back and forth, and I appreciate that. And I wish you all the best in your endeavors. And, you know, we can't look back at any of the places where we've been. We just need to continue to look and move forward, and so-
30 seconds.
I'm excited to see what comes next for our students here at Patrog Medford. And I think one day, we'll be looking at one of our Project Citizen students, you know, trying to do this kind of a job here. So thank you for the, taking on the responsibility, and I wish you all the best.
Thank you, Ms. Costello.
Jody Moran, 51 First Avenue, Medford. I'm sorry to get so personal, but I can't help it. Success is individualized, and I define my personal success as being a great mom. And this district is not just about its students, it's also about the parents. And you recognize that, and you give me the opportunity to be a great mom. Because I've always said that if I'm involved in their education, my children will learn and grow to value their own education and know their worth. And if they feel like they belong here, they're more likely to succeed here. And so when I get involved in the school and the community, they will just naturally want to follow suit. You've not only given me the opportunity to be a better mom, you've given me the opportunity to be closer to my kids' educations, and I'm forever grateful for that. You've been so incredibly, not just professional, but personable. And so thank you for every moment. I am too also devastated that when my kids graduate in two years that you won't be handing them their diplomas. I know you've met them both, and you've always been so gracious with them. So thank you from the bottom of my heart. I am completely stunned. I can't stop shaking my head, so it's going to take some time to resonate. Thank you for your advocacy, your dedication, and for always letting me just be mom when it meant the most. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Moran. Okay, if there are no more community comments, we'll move on to Board comments. We'll start down at the end of the day with Trustee Salazar.
Not a good day to start. There's a lot to say tonight. So we'll start with the easy stuff. Excuse me. I'm also overcoming a cold like everybody else in this room. First off, I'd like to thank Dr. Daley, Ms. Percher, and Mr. Wheatley for their incredible presentation on the update of implementing our iReady Math Program. This was well-done and thoroughly outlined. I think the thing that resonated most with me was seeing Mr. Rena Han's class and how dynamic that lesson was. You know, if that's what we're doing in classes and we're going in the right direction, those kids and how engaged they were was so great to see. That's what teaching is. Also, the Generation Citizen presentation. Those kids did an outstanding job. They had such valuable insight, and it's great to see that we take that and we can run with it. Well, I hope to see that. There's even, their oratory, their speaking skills were fantastic. It was great to see that. And I, it's great now how we have our voices of our students in most of our presentations now, and I think the Board really values that and sees the impact that that has. And lastly, for what we've seen, the musical, if anybody hasn't seen it, it was, I don't know, we outdo ourselves every single- know, we outdo ourselves every single year. That was outstanding. Just on a personal note, I brought my whole family there this weekend, and as I was cleaning out my car, I had the playbill in there, and I asked my wife if she wanted to hold onto it. She's like, "Oh, we're holding on to that. We're going to see that girl on Broadway one day." Like, it was incredible talent that those kids have was outstanding. It's funny, her, not to like, you know, say anything poorly, but her district ran the same play this year and didn't hold a candle to what we did out there, so just kudos for that. And lastly, you know, and not leastly, Dr. Jones. I'm going to read almost everything Mark said, President Nagren said, but although there's still a lot of work to be done, I believe you're leaving a lasting legacy here of excellence in Patchogue, where we are fostering the needs of all our students. And as we see you depart, you know, we see watch with a heavy heart, but we do understand. You're appreciated, and you will sorely be missed. There is so much more to say about your accomplishments and your character, but I'm going to leave it at that. So thank you so much for everything you've done for our community.
So I always like going behind Fran because he gets to do all the little nitty-gritty. I just said thank you to all of our presenters tonight. Your dedication to the district is seen and appreciated, and we especially love seeing the students and hearing from them. The musical was spectacular. I went all three nights. My daughter participated. All of the students, the cast, the crew, the pit, the cosmetology and construction CTE kids that built the sets, did the hair and makeup for Publicity Day and for performances, and the photo students who took all of their amazing pictures that we outdid ourselves in the lobby with the displays. But especially thanks to Nate Brickman, who has upped the level of our productions, and every year it gets better and better, and that goes for everything. He touches music and art. He just turns it into gold somehow. Plus, he had that snazzy pink jacket. But then also to the production team, they teach our kids all day long, and then they see our kids more than we see them. I know for a bunch of us sitting here in this audience, we haven't seen our kids in any free time. They come home and they fall asleep. And these teachers see them all day long, and then they're with them all week and Saturdays. So, you know, just thank you to them. And then a special thanks to the fame parents, just what you guys do and make it just worthwhile for them, you know. I always know my kids are in good hands because they have other moms that can take care of them when I'm not around, so that's that. And then Dr. Jones. While my heart is breaking, I fully support and understand your decision, but know that we, all stakeholders, the Board, the Cabinet, will all continue your work and your vision for the district. I, as a parent who transferred into the district six years ago, my first full year was when you were superintendent, and know that we have been blessed to have had you. I see you as a friend and as a mentor, and we see the transformation that has occurred in this time that you've been here. You are renowned and sought after in the educational community for presentations and seminars, but in our hearts, we knew you were ours. I'm sorry. All of our district's accomplishments were based on your vision, and ultimately, we are blessed to have had you, and we thank you. So the Generation Citizen, I am blown away by that presentation. They did such good work, down to like, what's the glue in the rugs? Like, amazing work. The mathematics curriculum, thank you very much to Dr. Dally and Ms. Perchett. And Mr. Whaley was my now-27-year-old daughter's kindergarten teacher. He's great. I was very happy to see the children doing the work here. What a lot of fun that was, and I'm so grateful for the time that they took to make that presentation. Dr. Jones, I did have something written, and I left it home, of course. I'll have more to say later, but I did want to express my gratitude for your leadership, your guidance, your mentorship through some exceptionally awful times. Because of you, we were able to not only recover from the tailspin that you inherited, but we also navigating, like I said, awful things and the pandemic, and we actually grew as a community because of your leadership into a more welcoming, inclusive, and compassionate school district, and I thank you.
Yeah, I just want to say kudos for both presentations. It's great to see the students actually do the work and complete it and see what they're really doing, because we can't get into the classrooms to see what they're doing. Trustee Krieger, Trustee Smith, and I went to a mental health joint conference, and that was very inspiring. We listened to John Paul, and he was very inspiring, and if you were having a bad day, he definitely lifted some of us up that day to kind of say, you know, when things get tough, this is where you're meant to be, and this is how you do it. So that was good. And also, on 3/20, Nassau Suffolk School Board is doing a webinar called Social Media Addiction, and it's a girl telling her story about how she was addicted to social media. I also want to say congratulations to Evan Frazier. He was a Suffolk Large School champs. And to the four-by-two of Evan, Brody, Ryan, and Jayden, they're actually competing in state qualals tomorrow, so hopefully good luck to them, hopefully they make it to states. The musical was phenomenal. It was so awesome to see how every seat was like taken up. It was like being at a Broadway play, and you had Miss Base and Mr. Cowal walking down and asking how many seats are left. But you really did feel like you were on Broadway, and the one thing that I heard that everyone was saying is how we have the live music, and our kids are so awesome in the pit also. It was just phenomenal to see that, and they put on such a great show. Donna, you know, Dr. Jones, it's been a ride, and I think I agree with Mrs. Moran over there of making us a better parent. I know you've been through my struggles with both of my sons, and I think you just made us, made me a stronger leader. Definitely our 7:00 a.m. phone calls were tough, but they were long, but it was definitely inspiring, and I know you definitely inspired us to do the right thing, and we know we have your guidance along the way, and, you know, we'll miss you.
Yes, so the night Dr. Jones was appointed, so everybody kind of has a misconception over why I walked out, and Dr. Jones knows this wasn't about her, it was about the Board, it was about the actions that the Board were taking, which we were in the midst of coming off of another superintendent who kind of just left on us in the middle, and we were working on some things. And, you know, by the way, again, I know the community doesn't know what happens behind the curtains, I always said that when people got on the Board, oh, now you're on the other side, you get to see the whole story, and we can't really talk about all those things. But, you know, during that time, it was about what the Board said to the community, which was, "We're going to search for a superintendent, we're going to go out for a search," and then all of a sudden, no, we're not. We're going to go with Dr. Jones. And we went through a process, and taking the Board through why Dr. Jones would be the right choice for the Board, and then we were working on other contract aspects, as you know, and then we got to that point where we had never made, we had never made the decision that that Christmas meeting was going to be Dr. Jones' appointment meeting, and no family was here. I think I had asked you afterwards, and you said, "No, I didn't know that this is what was going to go down." It was a surprise to you, as it was to everybody else. So, you know, I know you say this, and I was one of the seven Board members, only one of the seven Board members who was left, that I think at some point you were like, "You're going to take a chance on me?" kind of deal, and you were appreciative, as you call them, seven white men who basically said, "Oh, we're going to take on a superintendent who's of color." And we're all sitting there and going like, "That has nothing to do with it." She had such talent and such background, such experience, and we were in dire straits, and I said this before, financially, and you really bailed us out. And when it came to the superintendent position, it was sort of the same thing of working that through. Donna, I mean, I didn't really want to say a lot tonight because she's not leaving tonight. This isn't like your farewell, that'll come in a few months, and hopefully at that point, I would love to see the entire community come out, you know. I mean, I appreciate, nobody knew this was going to happen tonight, so you're all surprised and shocked. We know, we've been going through the shock ourselves and working through things, but, you know, and as far as, you know, parents saying, "Oh, I'm not going to have Dr. Jones give my student a diploma," you're invited back every year. Oh, look at her, she's like, "Oh, I don't know." But I just, I also want to thank the community for coming out and saying what you said for Dr. Jones, because you're all right. She is feeling like, you know, all the horrible things that have been said, and, you know, as we were kind of discussing before, I said, "Dr. Jones, hopefully when you go out into this auditorium, you're going to feel the love that comes back to you from this community." I think you have felt that tonight, and it's only, it's only a small segment, I think, of how everybody in this community feels about you and about that situation and the support you have from the community. Only a few months left to go, so to speak. I know you've committed to, you know, staying with us and helping us and getting through our transitions and things like that, but as I've said to you before, we want to see this where you go out on top and really feel like you, you know, not just, you know, kind of fading away, but more like a big celebration of everything you've done, and that's what we'll do back in our June meeting, I guess. So thank you.
Okay, I'll make this quick. The presentations were spectacular. I was able to actually go to the Generation Citizen presentation that morning, and I will add that I sat in those wood chairs for almost an hour, and they were a bit uncomfortable, so furniture. Yeah, so I do want to say that. The musical was amazing. I mean, I know all the hard work that goes into that. The kids are so talented from the stage to the pit, to the fame, to everybody involved. It was really just such pride going and seeing that show every year. I missed the preview, I was so upset that it was on a Tuesday, but I'm so happy that I got to see the full show. They shine, everybody. And then for Dr. Jones, I didn't really prepare anything for tonight, I will for June, but one thing, you know, that I will say about you that you've always done is you listen to us, you take notes, copious notes on what we say, and you always address what we ask for, and what we ask for is what the community is asking for. When we ask, "Can we look into air conditioning? Can we look into this?" It's because we listen to what the community says, so we appreciate when the community comes out, good or bad, but we love the good. Tonight was really beautiful, and every once in a while, we all need that support. Our superintendent needs that support, so thank you for coming out and speaking on behalf of Dr. Jones and the support, and thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Trustee Andrade. Okay, first, I'd like to just comment on the math presentation. For as beautiful as it was, what was most rewarding to me was watching the students work diligently under the pressure of being in a public forum and answering those questions and then explaining them and how they did it. It just shows how the math program that we're undergoing right now is really working, and the students are fully engaged and enjoying what they're doing. So thank you to Dr. Dally and her entire team on that. Generation Citizen, those students are future leaders of America. They came in here tonight, they were polished, they were prepared. I was actually watching as they commented on everything and were not really reading off of any prepared notes. They just knew what they were talking about, and they handled it well, and they were quite impressive, and they made an impression on all of us. As far as the musical is concerned, I had the pleasure of attending it as well. I can't say anything greater than what everybody already has said, but what I will say is, to sit in the presentation of the musical for two and a half hours, to watch those students, they're, remember, they're students, this is not their full-time job. They knew every word to every song without a blip anywhere along the way. It was just amazing. Then, at the same time where they're singing and dancing, the entire pit was playing, and you didn't even realize they were there because they were flawless. It was like listening to music played on a record player, if anybody knows what that is anymore. Then to watch the crew between each scene and each set with lights on or lights off, make everything move and change and flow that you really felt like you were on the set with them. It was amazing to see that all happen. So kudos to everybody that was involved, directors, teachers, band leaders, but again, most importantly, the parents that dedicated the time to make sure their students were prepared and ready for the teachers and the directors on an everyday basis. As far as Dr. Jones is concerned, when I first got on the Board, my first committee was finance, and I reached out to her in her office, and I said, "Would it be okay if I came down?" And I know this is going to be a big learning curve for me. She welcomed me into her office, which was wall-to-wall, three-inch white binders packed with information that you didn't even know existed. And the point of the matter was, she knew everything that was in every binder, and when I asked a question, she went right to it, whether it would be volume one, two, three, or four, whatever it was, she knew where everything was. And she explained it to me without opening a book and just let it roll right off her head as she knew everything that was in every binder. And that was my first interaction, and the night she became superintendent of schools, I knew that she was the right choice, and she has led with integrity, perseverance. She has been that leader where we know that we could always count on her to make the right decision, or at least give us the support, or we gave her the support that was needed to make the right decision. And what she's done over the years in her tenure is made this district all-inclusive, with the statement "all" means "all" really is Patchogue Medford, because that was her credo. She made sure that everybody felt and lived it and not just a bunch of words rolling off your lips. So at this moment, I know I had prepared the statement earlier, and I shared that, but I really want to wrap it up with, "Thank you for everything you do every day." That's what people don't realize. It's nonstop, 24/7, 365, year after year after year, to drive in from where she lives, be the first one in, the last one out on a daily basis, and push forward to make sure that our students, staff, faculty, and community has everything they need to be successful. She provides an opportunity for everyone, and it's our responsibility to make sure we take that opportunity and run with it, and I just, again, want to thank you for that.
Can I get a motion to adjourn?
I'll make the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Meeting adjourned.